Motion by Stevenson, second by Casey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Next, we have approval of our minutes from September twentieth meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the September twentieth meeting.
Second.
Motion by Heckler, second by Knablock. Any discussion or corrections? You read on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with Commissioner Smokey and Stevenson abstaining. Our first business under old business is planning case eighteen dash thirteen, a PUD amendment and final PUD site plan for a self-storage facility in R Investment, Hundred and First Avenue and Foley Boulevard. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, good evening here on the... All right, this is a proposed PUD amendment. The property is located at the corner of Foley Boulevard and Hundred and First, Highway ten here and Dogwood along this area here. And this is a site here. It's also got kind of a dogleg here that provides access to the site as well as the Holiday Station store, which is here. These are North Star Apartments. We've got the office buildings here. This site, the Holiday Store, the Apartments and the office site here are all part of this PUD. The Holiday Station store was approved back in nineteen ninety-eight. The Apartments here were approved in two thousand two and the office buildings in two thousand six. What's being proposed is a one hundred thousand eight hundred square foot indoor self-storage facility situated here. Holiday Station is here, the canopies, the Apartments down here. Foley Boulevard is up here and Hundred and First is up in this area here. The... The building is situated such that it's a little more than twelve feet from this property line, which is approximately ninety feet from Foley Boulevard right away. On the south, it's twenty... Twenty... Twenty-six feet from Foley Boulevard, it's forty-four feet and fifty-nine feet from the Holiday Station. That property line is right here. Parking and access, there's two access points to this site, both are existing. The access off of Hundred and First is right-in only. It services both the Holiday Station as well as this proposal. They modified the entrance, are proposing to modify the entrance, such that it's more of a gradual turn into the site as opposed to a sharp right-hand turn that currently exists. This driveway in off of Dogwood is... Currently exists up to about this point here, then will be extended into the site. Parking across the front. City code does not have specific parking requirements for this type of use. The applicant has explained that it's their experience that park requirements range from eight to twelve spaces. They are proposing twelve spaces for this site. There are two loading bays on this site here as well as access to the office. There will be no outdoor storage. Here's the grading plan. They're proposing a stormwater pond down here as well as stormwater management area on the south. This does affect the landscaping on the site, and you'll see that with the landscape plan. They can't do landscaping in these areas because it impacts the way the drainage ponds work. And this area is in a wellhead protection area, so stormwater treatment's a priority for the city. And this is the grade, it goes up quite a ways up the steep hill here to Foley Boulevard. Here's the landscape plan that's being proposed. The larger trees here are overstory trees. The smaller circles are evergreen trees and ornamental. They are oversizing the trees on the site. Typically, overstory trees, maples, oaks, those type of trees, when they're planted are two and a half inches in size caliper. They're proposing four inches trees for the overstory. And for the ornamental trees, typically they're one and a half inches. And I believe they're proposing two-inch trees for the ornamental. This is a median that is between the parking lot for the proposed facility and Holiday. That will be lined with ornamental trees and then just banks of shrubs on each end and in the middle. Across this area here, these are actually on the adjoining site. Here's where those stormwater ponds are, so you can see landscaping is really limited. They are doing some ornamental trees along here. They've got an overstory tree up here. They are working with the Anoka County Highway Department to verify where the tree line is on here. And that'll come out and they do the actual field survey work. The landscape plan may be modified depending on where the actual trees sit. There may be opportunities here to put additional trees on site depending on the county's decision on what can be done with the trees on their property. They're not high-quality trees, they're kind of scrub trees, but they are fairly large. They have said it's okay to trim them, and that would provide an opportunity for additional trees along here, too. Here's the building elevations. The building is four stories high. It's a mix of different materials. Excuse me. For a comparison, the apartment buildings to the south, they are forty-two, forty feet to the top of the gable. And there is a two-story building on the northeast, northwest corner of Foley and Hundred and First there. That is a two-story office building. The exterior consists of precast panels with different finishes, composite metal panels, which are the gray here. The red here is... Has a brick finish. The applicant has not settled on a specific color. The concrete block in front of the dais here is a sample of two colors. They're trying to choose between, they're looking for some input from the council on that. They'd be happy with either one. One is more of a red tinge to it than the other. This here is the south elevation facing the Apartments. You can see the different metal finishes, the precast brick. And they are proposing a signage on that wall. This here is the north elevation, which faces Hundred and First. Again, you've got the brick, the different stained precast panels. They've got glass windows wrapped around here and then with aluminum awning over it to kind of break up the mass and the elevation of the building. This is the side that faces Foley Boulevard. Again, you've got windows, banker windows here and here to give it more of an office feel to it. Again, you can see how the metal awning wraps around the building with windows here. These are the loading doors, that'll be glass and the entrance to the office. These here are part of the precast panels. They'll be a different color, more of a gray, and it will be indented to give kind of a window feel to the panel. And then this elevation here is the one that faces Foley Boulevard. Again, you've got a bank of windows across the top that you could see from up above. And then the indentations in the panels here, you've got the red brick finish and the different color, the light brown on here. And they're proposing signage on the north, south and the elevation that faces the Holiday, the east elevation. If you go back to the site plan, you can see how the building facade is kind of broken up here so you don't have the long length here. And then along this side here, it doesn't have quite the... As big a break in it, but the materials and the landscaping are intended to provide some relief on the side of the building. Here's some architectural renderings. This here would be, as you're going over the bridge on Foley, those are the windows there. This is where the indentation is to provide some relief on the facade. This is the south elevation then facing the apartment buildings. This is what it would look like as you're coming off the ramp, coming onto Foley. This elevation here, that's the canopy with the windows underneath it. That's what you would see coming from that direction with the Holiday gas station back here. And this is what it would look like, kind of looking at it from the Holiday Station parking lot with the awning and the windows. And you've got the windows here, loading doors and office. You can see there is some relief on this side, it's just not as significant as the one on the opposite side of the building. And the applicant is here to give a presentation. We do have a color material board right here that shows the colors that are being proposed. That's the red brick is also kind of highlighted down there. And with that, I'll answer questions and the applicant's campaign.
Mr. Harlecker, is... There's no outdoor storage, so we don't... I mean, not storage, but a trash receptacle?
That will be inside.
That'll be inside.
Inside the building.
Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Is this accessible twenty-four seven?
No, it's not. They can give a better explanation of hours of operation. It is a secured building, you have to have a code to get in. It is fully monitored. And I don't believe it's open twenty-four seven, but they can provide the hours of operation.
And they will provide... It must be staffed part of the time?
Yes, it is. Yep.
Commissioner, any other questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knablock?
I know the one question on everyone's mind is snow removal. No, where would be the... I... If approved, I really like the flexibility that the applicant is providing in regards to adaption to additional overstory in the landscaping. So that is very good. The floor, the tight dimensions of this brings up the question of... It's kind of premature, but snow removal is just part of it of... With the landscaping. The question I maybe should recap is... What is the... Forgot my question. Pass.
Would the petitioner like to come up and add anything? And I guess answer the question on hours of operation as well? State your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening. Good evening. Greg Hayes, Ebert Construction, E and R Investments. The applicant is one of our entities, development entities. And good evening, Planning Commission Chair and members. To answer the question about hours of operation, generally staffed from nine to six, five days a week. Saturday, ten to four. Sunday, may or may not be staffed, but the hours of accessibility generally are six or seven in the morning till ten or eleven at night. You have to have... Be signed up as a renter, you have a secure code, only you can get in and out of it. It's heavily monitored. And most floors have a keypad to go from floor to floor, so it's very secure. When you go out, the door locks behind you if it's after hours. And all trash recycling is inside. And it's the typical fifty-five gallon drum that you roll out. It's not intended for people to put their boxes or other stuff. There's instructions about that, that's not a waste collection point for that. So items are heavily monitored that are allowed to be stored in there. There's a long list of what can and can't be stored in the self-storage facility, but it is temperature-controlled. So a lot of people store their heirlooms, their photographs, their businesses, small businesses store their records. Little entrepreneurs might store their little hobby or craft businesses. And some people even store wine in some of the smaller units. So it creates a wide breadth of service for people in the community to store and keep and maintain things. And as I said, it's temperature and humidity-controlled, and customers like that. So it's well-lit, it's low-impact. The parking count here, twelve, is typical to what we do. We have another facility in Maple Grove that we're building that has eleven parking stalls. That's the same size. We have one in Brooklyn Park that's the same size that has nine stalls in it. We completed one in Plymouth, I believe that one has eleven stalls also. So it's pretty typical, and it's not just us, the other developers around town, same size and don't have any traffic impacts from it. As Scott mentioned, all loading and unloading is inside the building. There's no loading or unloading from the outside. The building is a real architectural precast panel with heavy scoring and detailing. I know it doesn't show real well in a two-dimensional, but you know, there's a lot of relief in it. The brick is pretty nice-looking precast. The architectural metals are all very high-quality. You see them on everything from at the airport to other high-quality buildings around the metro area. So we like to develop a high-quality product. So I'm here to answer any questions if anybody...
How many individual storage units are there in there?
There's usually eight hundred or so. They vary in size from a small five-by-five up to sometimes on the main floor fifteen by thirty so people could put bigger stuff. And the number and volume, the bigger ones, there's a fewer of, and the real small ones are fewer of. And then everything in between, like a ten-by-ten or a ten-by-fifteen or a ten-by-twenty, and they vary. And there's a mix on floor to floor. There's two elevators in the building, so good access for people. The energy impact is low, it's all motion-sensitive lighting. So if nobody's on the second floor, there's no lights on. You walk up and they come on as you go down the hallway and stay on. So it's an energy-efficient building, too, so...
Commissioner Stevenson?
Can you tell me when you acquired this property?
We're under contract with the seller here to acquire it and close on it this fall.
This fall?
Yep.
And the project that you're doing in Maple Grove, where is that?
That would be at Sixty-third and just north of Bass Lake Road and Four Ninety-four. It's about, if you know where, there's a McDonald's there just north of that, about a block and a half, and it fronts Four Ninety-four. We just broke ground on that, because we just started on that.
And how many employees will work out of this facility?
Two usually at a time.
Commissioner, any other questions for the petitioner at this time? All right, we may have more for you later.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last month, we opened a public hearing and then continued it this evening. So at this time, I will reopen the public hearing. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak on this case? Anyone wish to speak on this case? Seeing done, we will close the public hearing. And Commissioner?
Chair Schwartz?
Yes?
I'd like to add something here. There is a corresponding zone change that's... It's tied to this, but it's really a separate application. Since this is a planned unit development, any changes to the PUD have to comply with the current code requirement. Currently, the zoning of this parcel is low-density residential. So that really limits any modifications to this PUD to very-density residential. And it's not really an appropriate use for this. So one of the conditions that staff recommends of approval is that the zone change from low-density residential to general commercial be approved. That would apply to any modification, whether it's this project or another one that might come down the line. This is really our commercial site, and any modification that would include a commercial or any modification at all to this site would require an underlying zoning of general commercial.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I see that's their next case on our agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey?
Mr. Harlecker, so did the Holiday Station and the office buildings and the Apartments, did they all have to undergo the same zone change? Because they were part of the PUD?
They were part of the PUD.
As low-density?
And at the time, this was the underlying zoning. This is the zoning map from the next application. As you can see, it's all zoned general commercial or low-density residential. At the time this PUD was approved, this type of situation is fairly common. Since that time, the PUD ordinance has been amended. So in a situation like this, this is identified as a restaurant site right now. So any use that would want to go on to this site, whether it's this applicant or another one, would still have to undergo a zone change to get this to a general commercial designation so they could change it to another commercial use. As it sits right now, the only thing it can be used as is a residential use because that's the way the current code is written.
Was the office complex, those four buildings, was that at one time low-density residential?
I'm not sure, it might have been office the whole time.
It isn't now.
Yeah, it's currently zoned office.
Yeah.
With the PUD.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson?
I'm leaning very strongly to voting against this proposal. I think that this has got to be one of the most visible parcels of open land we have remaining in Coon Rapids at the intersection of Foley Boulevard and Highway ten. And I think that to build a self-storage facility there is not a good priority for the city of Coon Rapids. I think that that was recognized when the PUD was adopted. And the concept of a restaurant is a much better fit for such a visible and well, easily accessible location in the city. I don't view a self-storage facility as something that's a good amenity to the people of Coon Rapids. We have many self-storage facilities in the city of Coon Rapids. I don't believe that it would be a major employer in the city of Coon Rapids. We just heard that there would be two people on staff there. I don't see a compelling reason to amend the PUD. Other than that, the applicant has a proposal to build something here. It looks like a nice building. I'm not quarreling with the architecture or the landscaping. But there's a reason why we adopted a PUD for this parcel. There's a reason why we had PUDs in the first place. This is a piece of land that should be used for a purpose that's fitting with its location in the city. And I don't believe a self-storage facility is within that process. So I often like to defer to property owners and developers, you know? They're working in the market, but there's limitations to that deference. And we adopted this for a reason. I have not heard tonight or read in the papers any good reason why we should make this change.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey?
So I have to... I have to cautiously, I guess, disagree with that. The reason I'm thinking, I know that that property has been highlighted as a great or a place for a restaurant and so forth, but you know, I've driven by that intersection for an awfully long time. I feel like a restaurant at that intersection could be problematic with the amount of extra traffic that it would bring in. I think that this type of facility, because it wouldn't be drawing in high traffic, helps to mitigate some of those issues. I'm just not sure that intersection could really handle something with higher traffic. I do think that the building looks really nice in terms of, you know, where it is placed when you talk about, you know, that it's a prime piece of property. What they are proposing for the architecture and so forth is very appealing. I love the windows. I love that it doesn't look like a warehouse, per se. I think that they're taking great care, you know, to try and dress the outside up with the landscaping. So I think they're making good, you know, good intentions here. I think my concern is always about the traffic, and I just am not sure that the corner is really adequately fit for a restaurant or any type of business where it would draw in a whole lot of traffic. So I guess I'm going to probably lean towards approving it, but...
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey?
I'm going to lean toward approving it, too, just because we have a history with this PUD as we've had with other PUDs within the city. This one since nineteen ninety-eight, I think. And the history's been, they're all amended. You know, we revisit, visit and revisit these PUDs and amend them. And they're almost a thing of the past. I mean, because the markets changed, the ebb and flow of business has changed. To me, this doesn't look like a warehouse either. I think it looks like an office building cleverly disguised, has a self-storage unit. And the fact that it's temperature-controlled, I think, sets it apart in the city. That's appealing. Heck, I might even find something that could go in there, but that has an appeal to it. And I like the look of it. And on that north side, that Hundred and First Avenue, they've taken great pains to really upscale the landscaping, I think, to disguise it. No, not saying that, but just to make it look really nice. Just a couple thoughts I want to throw out there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heckler? Commissioner Heikla.
I also, I appreciate what Commissioner Stevenson has to say. I wish it was, I would like to see an office building or something that employed more people. That would be the thing that I would be thinking about. But I also agree with Commissioners Schmokey and Casey that the land has sat vacant there for many, many, many years, and the PUDs have frequently been changed. And it does look like a, it's a very attractive building, and they obviously have done their research, or they wouldn't be building it there or proposing it there. So I have a tendency, or I think that I will vote to approve as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
One other thing, I'll revisit Commissioner Knoblock's question. Were you talking snow removal off the roof, or just off the grounds?
There is something bothering me. There is, there's a lot of very good comments and consideration by everything I've heard so far. Something about this application in, from the landscaping and the, some of it is off to me. But, and I think that's where I was heading to with snow removal, because having originally grown up in Canada, snow was always on my mind, so. If that answers your question.
Off the grounds, you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm talking about, since the dimensions and how this facility, it's going to be a very tight fit, I still think the amount of parking spaces are, they meet the requirement, but I think it's too less. But from what we've heard, other locations have similar parking space, so I'll take that information as is. I'm on the fence on it right now. I'm for and against it as well. But in regards to your question, I think the dimensions on the ground and the woods and the landscaping, the infiltration, the filtration pond and the requirements and everything, and how it's shoehorned in right beside a Holiday, I think it's a very difficult plan to be successful. And that's just my opinion. It could very much be successful in that. So I see Mr. Stevenson's points very clearly, as well as some of my other commissioners as well. So it is a challenging, yet interesting proposal.
My thoughts are, for the most part, in agreement with Commissioners Schmokey and Casey. Property has been there since approximately 2000. Had a lot of time for a restaurant to come in, if one wanted to. Apparently is not a location that a restaurant is interested in. I also feel that location would not be able to handle the amount of traffic that a restaurant, such as a McDonald's or a fast-food-style restaurant could, would provide. And the fact that there are other storage facilities in Coon Rapids is true. However, to my knowledge, none of them are climate-controlled. This would be the first climate-controlled facility in Coon Rapids. And so at this time, I would be supporting the proposal. Any commissioner wish to try a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmokey.
I'll recommend approval of the proposed PUD and file PUD site plan with the conditions as follows. Number one, that's compliance, compliant with the Title XI. Number two, all engineering comments are addressed. Number three, that all Anoka County Highway Department comments are addressed. All Minnesota DOT comments are addressed. Park dedication in the amount of $8,250 will be paid to, prior to releasing the building permit. The partial vacation of a street drainage and utility easement along 101st Avenue must be approved prior to the issuance of a building permit, a building permit plan, excuse me, accordingly, and place additional overstory trees where possible. The applicant will contact the Anoka County Highway Department regarding selective cutting of trees along the property line, and the zone change from low-density residential to PUD, to general commercial PUD is approved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Schmokey, second by Heikla. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The motion carries four to two, with Commissioner Stevenson and Knoblock opposed. This is a recommendation by the planning commission with a decision by the city council after November 20th meeting. Good luck. Our second order of business this evening is Planning Case 18-17, a zone change from low-density residential PUD, or two, residential two PUD to general commercial PUD at 101st Avenue, Foley Boulevard, E&amp;R Investments. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair Schwartz and Commissioners. We talked a little bit in the last presentation. The underlying zoning here is low-density residential two, and in order for this development or any other commercial development other than a restaurant to go on this site, the underlying zoning needs to be changed from low-density residential to general commercial because of the way the PUD ordinance is structured. The underlying land use is general commercial, so a zone change to general commercial would be consistent with the land use of general commercial. And looking at the criteria to consider when, considering a zone change, the proposed zone change will not adversely impact the area. The proposed zone change will not impact the surrounding land uses, and it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan in that the underlying zoning is general commercial, and the existing PUD's designation will remain in place. With that, staff is recommending, the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed zone change based on the following. The proposed rezoning to general commercial PUD is consistent with the land use designation of general commercial. The proposed rezoning is compatible with adjacent land uses and zoning. The times and conditions have changed, so that a reasonable use in the property cannot be made under the current zoning, and the proposed zone change would not have an adverse impact on the area.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commissioner, any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Harlecker. Commissioner Stevenson.
Just for clarity, we're voting on changing the zoning, not just for the site of the proposed self-storage facility, but also for the Holiday. Is that?
No. Commissioner Stevenson, it's just for this site.
So I'm just confused, because I see in the materials that we were provided, the Holiday, at least initially, was zoned. Oh, I see. I know I'm mixing up here. I was looking at the land use map. That's my problem, my fault. So let me ask a different question.
Okay.
It seems to me, I understand that the Holiday doesn't need to be rezoned to commercial, but given that it's a commercial property, and it's going to be this weird, the zoning map is going to look funky after this, because you're going to have this self-storage facility that's going to be an island of general commercial sitting next to this low-density. But I imagine, since we didn't notice up anything regarding the Holiday site, we can't amend this proposal to include the Holiday in order to clean up the zoning map.
At this point, no. This was what the applicant actually, this is what they applied for.
Right, right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Harlecker, are you saying the Holiday Station sits in its zone for low-density residential two?
Correct.
Even now?
Yep.
How did that get by?
At the time, they did the planned unit development, they looked, the uses did not have to be consistent with underlying zoning. Looking back through the packets and the discussions, there was some discussion about changing the zoning to general commercial, but they decided, just for whatever reason, to keep it as is and handle everything as part of the PUD process, as opposed to opening it up to other general commercial uses.
Can I ask just one more follow-up question, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Stevenson.
Am I remembering mistakenly that we have over time, occasionally had proposals just to clean up zoning that the staff would bring forwards from, in other occasions? All I'm, the reason why I'm asking is I think maybe this should go on someone's list as something to clean up at some point.
It can. The situation came up with the property up in Shenandoah Boulevard and Main Street, just a couple months ago, where they were moderate-density residential, and it was really more fitting for a single-family residential. So it will be put on our to-do list.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Harlecker, at that same time, those North Ridge Apartments are zoned for low-density residential also?
Yep.
And they're not, right?
They're high-density residential.
Yeah, okay. So is that a cleanup item, too?
If you would like, it can be.
We're housekeeping tonight.
Any other questions at this time? All right, we need to have a public hearing on this matter, so I will open a public hearing in Planning Case 18-17, a zone change from low-density residential two PUD to general commercial PUD at 101st Avenue and Foley Boulevard. Anyone present wish to speak to this case? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. And commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I just want to say that while I voted against the PUD amendment, I'll be voting for the zone change, because I think this parcel, no matter what it would be developed as in the future, should be commercial. So I just wanted to explain to the commissioner who was watching why I'm going to be voting yes this time, even though I would know before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, case Schmokey.
In Planning Case 18-17, recommend approval of the proposed zone change to general commercial PUD based on the conditions stated in our packet.
Second. Motion by Schmokey, second by Stevenson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This is a recommendation by the planning commission, and will be introduced by the city council after November 7th meeting. Good luck. All right, our next case, planning case, or no, it's a revocation of a conditional use permit of Planning Case 606-63, 11031 Bittersweet Street, Cheryl Malkerson. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, this is a request to revoke the conditional use permit for home occupation, which is a massage therapy. A review of city records indicated that Ms. Malkerson no longer owns the property, and the business is no longer in operation there. That happened in the fall of this year. The original conditional use permit was approved on October 2006, and then in September, we found out that Ms. Malkerson no longer owned the property. On the 18th, we sent out a letter to that address, did not hear back from either her or the current resident, and then at October 1st, we had not heard anything, so we decided to put it on the commission agenda for revocation. On October 3rd, a public hearing notice was sent to the address indicating that the revocation process was going to move forward, and that was going to be placed on the tonight's agenda. We did not hear anything. And in this planning case, 663, staff is recommending that the home occupation permit be revoked for this address.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in the revocation of a conditional use permit for Planning Case 06-63 at 11031 Bittersweet Street. Anyone wish to speak on this matter? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Commissioner Heikla.
I'd like to ask, just if somebody sells a property, if this conditional use permit does not become obvious or apparent, or anything that there is a conditional use in effect for that property?
Well, Commissioner Heikla, conditional use permits are recorded with the county, so a search of county records would indicate that the conditional use permit is there. Conditional use permits stay with the property. It doesn't change with ownership. That's a significant change over what we do now with the home occupation permit. If the permit is issued to the address as well as the person, so if that person moves, the home occupation permit is no longer in effect, and if somebody else wanted to continue that, they would have to come in and apply for a home occupation permit. This is one of the reasons why we changed it. It's a very time-consuming process to revoke a conditional use permit.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
In Planning Case 06-63, I move that we revoke the home occupation conditional use permit for massage therapy, based on the finding that the home occupation is no longer operating at this address.
Second. Motion by Casey, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. It's a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 days if anyone wishes to do so. Our next case is Planning Case 18-16, a home occupation permit for a barber shop at 3878 120th Avenue. Diego Michael?
Michel.
Michel. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, this is a request for a home occupation permit as opposed to a home occupation conditional use permit. What the applicant is proposing to do is operate a barber shop as a home occupation. The applicant will provide haircut, beard trims, facials, those type of services. The hours that the clients will visit the house are Monday through Wednesday, and Friday and Saturday, 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., by appointment only, one client at a time. This is the site here with, is that street there?
Round Lake.
Rock Lake Boulevard. And, let's see, a sheet for a second. Round Lake Boulevard, 120th year, apartment buildings to the rear, surrounded by single-family residences on the north, east, and west. This is the site plan of the property, with the driveway coming in off of 120th. The applicant will be installing a half-bath and a The applicant will be installing a half-bath and a second entrance into the room than which the barber shop will be located. That's a requirement of the state board, that's part of their licensing requirements, is that it have a separate entrance, so they'll be doing another residential door on the front of the building. Here's kind of a floor plan of what it would be. The area devoted for the home occupation will be in the front, with access here, and then a half-bath will be added. The room is already in the house, what the new construction will be is the half-bath. And the barber shop will be located, it's a one hundred and fifty-square-foot room. The proposal was compared to the standards found in section eleven dash three oh four point two, and the proposal does meet the criteria for granting home occupation. Staff is recommending, planning commission recommend, or planning commission approve the home occupation permit with the following conditions. Hours of operation are limited to between nine AM and eight PM. Maximum time that clients can be at the premises, thirty hours per week. Business can occupy no more than two hundred and seventy square feet. All vehicles associated with the residents and the home occupation are parked in the driveway, compliance with Title eleven, and all necessary building permits are obtained. And the applicant is in the audience, if you have specific questions, again.
Is there anything the applicant would like to add? Step up the microphone, state your name and address, please, for the record.
Diego Michel, and thirty-eight-seventy-eight on One Hundred and Twentieth Avenue. And I just wanted to add that I'm excited to get the ball rolling, and just wanna make sure I'm doing, you know, doing it correctly and in compliance and everything, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Well, I have a question about the, the hours of operation are nine to nine, is that right? But what was the reference for this three to eight?
Maybe, Commissioner Casey, I could address that. The three to eight is what he's proposing. The nine to eight is code compliance. That's what would have to be to comply with the city code. So, he's compliant with respect to the hours of operation, as well as the thirty hours per week, and the two hundred and seventy square feet, which is the percentage of the house which can be devoted to the home occupation.
Okay, so he's just within the guidelines?
Correct.
They're more broad, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heiklau.
I wonder, is there any signage issue, will there be a barber pole perhaps, or any?
No, maybe inside, that's a possibility, but not anywhere visible outside.
Will you have any special markings on the, on the door, so they know which door to use?
Yeah.
There's two doors to the home?
Right, I was thinking about that, I haven't thought that through yet, but everything works through appointment, so there is an automatic message sent out, you know, if it were to go through, and they would explain, you know, door on the left or door on the right.
Commissioner Schmoki.
Is, is there like a transition area for guests that are coming in, or clients as they're coming and going? So, it, I know, it seems, it seems to me like it's gonna be a pretty tight quarter. So, as they're coming in, is there an area for someone to wait while the previous client is finishing up, etc.? I wanna just address any concerns that there would be people waiting out in their cars, or, you know, things like that.
Right, yeah, it is gonna be a tight space, but there is room to, for there to be like a little bench, and since it's only one customer at a time, there'll be just one person waiting, so.
Commission, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case eighteen dash sixteen, a home occupation permit for a barber shop at three-eight-seven-eight One Hundred and Twentieth Avenue. Anyone wish to speak, public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing, and commission.
Chair, first.
Commissioner Nabok.
I recommend, move to recommend in planning case eighteen dash sixteen to approve the home occupation permit with the following conditions. One, hours of operation limited between nine AM and eight PM. Two, maximum time that clients can be on the premises is thirty hours per week. Three, the business can occupy no more than two hundred and seventy square feet. Four, all vehicles associated with residents and home occupation are parked in the driveway. Five, compliance with Title eleven, city code of Coon Rapids. And finally, six, all necessary building permits are booked.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Nabok, second by Heiklau, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post. Motion carries, it's a decision by the planning commission, and unless appealed, the city council within ten days. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, our final case for this evening is our twenty forty comprehensive plan update. Mr. Harlecker?
Ted, you wanna?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, I just got a few introductory remarks that I'd like to make, and I believe Scott has a short PowerPoint presentation, kind of run through highlighting a little bit about the comp plan. So, as you know, we're ending, or we're kind of approaching the end of the process that we started back in twenty seventeen. Obviously, the planning commission was, was involved in this process, and we're very grateful for the time we've taken. You know, we had several work sessions where you stayed, stayed extra time to assist us as we went through that process, and I wanna acknowledge and thank you for your participation in this process. Obviously, the council was involved. We had several other advisory groups, the Sustainability Commission, we met with that commission to get their feedback, Parks and Recreation, we also got a lot of input from residents, we had an online survey, we received, I don't remember how many comments, close to, I think it was close to two hundred comments that came in through our website. We had a kiosk or a presence at the Summer in the City meetings, maybe you saw us last summer, where we were talking about the comp plan. So, I think we, we tried to do a good job of engaging the public in this process. Sometimes it's not the easiest thing to get public comments on a document like this, but I think we did get what feedback we could. I also wanted to acknowledge the staff that was involved in this, because this was really a heavy lift on our part. You know, a number of cities actually hire a lot of this out, some elements of the comp plan were farmed out to different consultants, but most of what you see in that document, with the exception of probably the Water Resources chapter, pieces of the transportation plan, most everything else in that document was the product of staff here at the city. So, Scott Harlecker was involved in that, as well as Matt Brown. We had Tim Hamer and Mark Hanson, Greg Angell and Ryan Gunderson in the Public Works and Engineering area. Sustainability Recycling Center staff, Colleen Sinclair and Andy Kintop were also involved in that. And then our communications staff in the city manager's office, including Tara Jenkins, who did this terrific work with, with this document. It looks a lot different than the current plan that we have. Stephanie Ring were both involved in helping to format this and make it a much more, I think, readable document, much more user-friendly, so we're really proud of that. It was a great team and a long process, and I'm particularly very grateful for all that work. I think the bottom line is, it's a, it's a good plan with good policies that positions the city well for the future. It's not perfect, and over time, I'm sure we'll make amendments to it, but I think by and large, it's a document that really positions us well for future growth and development. So, with that, Scott, do you wanna summarize the plan itself?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is just kind of give a higher-level overview, and just walk through it kind of chapter by chapter. The first chapter is, that we'll go over tonight, is the land use section. It's got some minimum requirements about future land uses, maps, policies, and to accommodate population employment growth up through twenty forty. And the policies that are in the land use plan must be consistent with the regional transportation and sanitary sewer plans. Kind of the, the key goals is to maintain neighborhoods, housing options, commercial development, open space, and recreational opportunities. Maintain a diversified economic base, protect natural resources, kind of maintain community character, and improve appearance and function along the Coon Rapids Boulevard, and, and try to eliminate and redevelop blighting influences and blighted properties. The twenty forty land use map, which is here, will not result in any major rezonings. A significant change is in the commercial land use designations. We're going to just a, 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 one commercial land use designation, it's just commercial. Right now, we've got a commercial land use designation for each of the zoning districts, and it's very cumbersome if there's gonna be any sort of zone change. We've gotta go through a land use change also. The other major change is, if you notice, the pink on this map are commercial mixed use, generally along, along the Boulevard and some of the areas we're looking at for redevelopment. That allows a mix of commercial and residential uses, which isn't currently available in the city. This here kind of highlights that there is that staff considers to be redevelopment areas, and for the most part, these redevelopment areas correspond with the commercial mixed-use land use designation. The next chapter is transportation. You can see it's, there's certain minimum requirements that the plan includes, population employment growth, and that's divided up into different districts and small zones in the cities called transportation analysis zones. Those TASs are also used to help determine traffic forecasts throughout the city. We worked closely with the Anoka County on the transportation forecast, and this is one of the areas that we did use a consultant, and that consultant was also worked with Anoka County Highway Departments. There is a lot of coordination going on between the city and Anoka County with respect to traffic forecasts. Current and future function, capacity of city streets. There are some streets, I think maybe half a dozen, that we're looking at changing the designation from like a local street to a collector's street because of the, the traffic and the interconnection functionality of those streets. We have a reference to the Regional Transit System Plan, there's a map in there with the different bus routes. We do have a section on the Regional Bicycle Network and the Regional Bike Trails, the Coon Creek Trail, as well as, excuse me, the Mississippi River Regional Trail. Sidewalks are included on there, as well as a reference to the aviation and the rail lines and freight areas in the city. I would like to also reference the Sustainability Commission's work on this. They recommended things like a complete streets policy, incorporating energy-efficient LED, LED street lighting and traffic signals, and different infrastructure needs, trying to accommodate the future growth of autonomous vehicles and electric vehicles, charging stations and, and things like that, and acknowledging that those changes in transportation are likely to come down the line. Highways and roads, we try to look at the way traffic flows through the community, make it safe, reduce congestion on, on local county and state roads, increase capacity on certain streets, and ensure that the Coon Rapids Boulevard design is compatible with potential new residential developments along the Boulevard. This is just a map of the regional transportation network. The reds are called principal arterials. It's Highway ten, Main Street, and six-ten. The other streets are county roads, and they're considered minor arterial streets. And we've got some of the grays are also considered minor arterial streets. I mean, it doesn't show up on here, but then the city does have connecting between the arterial streets and our local collectors that service areas within the city. Housing, again, there's some minimum requirements that are required. Assessment of existing housing stock, its, its quality, as well as affordability, to guide densities, to accommodate allocation of affordable housing, and include descriptions of programs, fiscal devices and actions that can be used to meet the housing needs. The, there is a, the implementation section does include the methods that the city is, is currently using to meet these minimum requirements, both in the short, medium, and long-term. This is just a, a graph from the plan that kind of references the housing ownership pattern in the city. As you can see, currently, it's seventy-four percent owner-occupied, this is in twenty fifteen. Twenty-four percent renter, and two percent vacant. It's, it's similar to what we had in twenty-ten, and a slight decrease from two thousand. And this is just housing affordability. In general, when, when we were looking at affordability in the comp plan, it broke down into three different categories. There is a fifty-one to eighty percent of the average median income, that's considered low. Thirty-one to fifty is considered very low, and then you have income at or below thirty percent for the very lowest income. And that, those, those incomes are used to determine affordability requirements for the city and what we currently have. The next section is water resources. That included wastewater, surface water, and water supply. And that section was really, consists of other plans that the city has completed in the past few years. Comprehensive water supply, excuse me, water supply plan, completed in twenty fourteen, and there's also the master water supply plan. There's a wellhead protection plan that was in, completed in twenty eighteen. Comprehensive sanitary sewer plan, and a local surface water management plan. All these plans were incorporated usually by reference in the Water Resources chapter of the comprehensive plan. Parks and open space, again, this is to acknowledge regional parks and trails and ensure consistency, and the capital improvement program for local parks and open space facilities. We did do that back in twenty-twelve. The city adopted the Parks, Trails, and Open Space system, and then the residents did approve a bonding referendum to implement many of those requirements and changes. It's just a map of what we have for parks in the city, an update plan. The red ones are the high-level improvements, blue ones are mid, green are- The red ones are the high level improvements, blue ones are mid, green are the low level, they don't need quite as much for improvements, and then the yellow are just maintenance. And many of these parks have been under renovation as a result of the bond that was passed. This is a, the regional trail system, again, you can see it coming along Coon Rapids Boulevard, then extending down through the Coon Rapids Dam Park, connecting over to Brooklyn Park across the dam, and extending down into Fridley along the river on the south, as well as the Coon Creek Trail that connects the dam park with Bunker Hills Park. And again, this is just, shows the different parks in the city, as well as the internal trails and the two major trails that tie the city north to south and east to west. Parks and open space, this was part of the implementation, and it was really put in place with the referendum, upgrade and redevelop neighborhood parks. Looking at a long term, maybe a pedestrian bridge over Highway ten, trail connection at Kennedy Park, Coon Creek West Trail segment from Lions Creek Park across Hanson Boulevard, and that would extend through the Gateway Project and along through the, somehow through the wetlands there, and complete remaining segments of the Coon Creek Regional Trail and a great separated crossing at Coon Rapids Boulevard and at Northdale Boulevard. Those are kind of important links in the system. And next one is the economic competitiveness. This is a new chapter that was not in the previous chapter, it's not required by the Met Council, but we decided it would be an important chapter to include in the comp plan. Looks at business redevelopment and development, and come up with policies, objectives to accomplish that. It consolidates other policy documents, economic development strategy, the Coon Rapids Boulevard framework plan, and gets it into one place. Looking at like a business outreach, financial, technical resources, workforce development, regional alignment with what other cities are doing, marketing the cities, legislative support, and then tracking data to make sure how these implementation processes are working. And the other, last chapter is the Mississippi River Critical Corridor area. In the old, or not old, the current comp plan, it's included as part of the land use section. In this, the twenty forty plan, it's being included as a standalone chapter, and the changes that were incorporated in the current chapter are a result of a DNR's update in the rules procedures. These new rules were taken effect in January of last year, and we must update our Mississippi River Critical Corridor area plans. And it's a separate process, but it piggybacks along with the comprehensive plan update. And in that, we look at a variety of things. We looked at visual impacts along the river, how the river's being used by residents. There's an inventory that was done of slopes, soil conditions, things like that. The, also looked at vegetation and different requirements for vegetation maintenance and vegetation replacement. And what this chapter does, it really sets the base for the next step in the process, which is revising the actual zoning regulations that are needed to implement the Critical Corridor Area Plan. That'll happen within the next probably three to five years, and that's kind of a commercial say, it's where the rubber meets the road. And we actually look at area by area and come up with zoning code regulations that implement the policies and objectives that are found in the Critical Corridor Plan. With that, I'll answer any questions. Listen for some comments, and we can take whatever comments you have back to the city council and make the amendments to the plan. This is scheduled at this point to go to the city council on November seventh.
Well, thank you, Mr. Harlecker. I think the city staff should be congratulated for the outstanding job they did on this document. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Casey.
Probably not critical or anything like that, but I was wondering, when we're talking about parks and open spaces, when might there be an updated city map? Not that this is the forum to address that in this comp plan, but when might we have a new one? We're looking at twenty eleven, maybe when all the parks, you know, renovations are done, or any thought to that? That would just be a comment that I...
Yeah. Commissioner Casey, I think it might, timing might be following the approval of the comp plan by the Met Council. They may have some recommendations, but following that, might be an opportune time to update that. That's really done through the Public Works and Parks and Rec Commission, through the updating of the map and plan.
Well, it's map on one side, parks on the other. It's kind of useful.
Okay.
So, it's coming, I guess.
Yeah.
We do need to have a public hearing on this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing on the twenty forty comprehensive plan update. Anyone wish to speak on this matter?
Mr. Chair, if I can just make a clarifying, I guess, a clarifying comment.
Mr. Vernalius.
So, as Mr. Harlecker pointed out, you know, after tonight, we'll go to the city council on November seventh. By the end of December, we need to submit this to the Met Council. At that point, the Met Council would have fifteen days to determine if the plan's complete. Now, we did submit a preliminary plan earlier this year to get just general comments on the plan. I don't think there was anything significant that came out of it, so I would not expect the Met Council to find that our plan is incomplete. At that point, the Met Council would have a hundred and twenty days to essentially approve or accept the plan. They would send us a letter, and then, once we receive that, the city would then have nine months to formally adopt the plan. I think there's some time built in there, if there's some changes that we need to make to the plan. So, this is an important step in the process, but it's not really the finest step, so to speak. So, I just wanted to clarify that for the commissioners.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Why are we still in a public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Commissioner Smokey.
Thank you. So, do you want to, any added comments at all, if we find some things that need clarification or correction?
Yeah, Commissioner Smokey, absolutely.
Okay, so I find two things I just wanted to call out really quickly. Page four dash two, under the housing tenure, it's the third sentence down, it's towards the end there, it says, "This decrease in owner occupancy can be attributed in part to the conversation." I'm sure it may need conversion.
It says four dash two?
Four dash two, so that's under the housing, so it just says, "to the conversation of some of the family homes," and I'm sure they need conversion. The other thing I just noted too was on page seven dash eight. It is the, one, two, three, the fourth line down where we speak about the industrial space. So, we reference four point seven, but we don't say four point seven of what, or four million seven hundred feet is it, or acres, or, you know, it's like, what is that measurement that the four point seven remains to? So, those are just two things that I, I get that it's four million seven hundred of space, but it doesn't, it doesn't give it a quantity or unit of measure. See that on page seven, eight?
Yeah, square feet. Oh, four point seven, got it.
Yes, where it says four million seven hundred of industrial space, but it doesn't give it a unit of measure of feet.
All right, are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Stevenson.
I move with the plan, the commission recommended the council that adoption of the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Casey.
Smokey.
Smokey, excuse me.
The other case.
One more chair over. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Post. This is a recommendation by the planning commission, and will be taken up by the city council at their November seventh meeting. And Mr. Harlecker, anything under other business?
Yeah, a couple things. The Riverdale Station project apartments are underway, they're brick gone, they're digging holes in the ground, they're up and going. And another important thing, meeting next Wednesday night, there's an open house for the Riverwalk Residential Project here at City Hall in the, just down the...
The citizens.
Down the, yeah, down the hall here. That starts at five o'clock, and it'll be an open house. I encourage the commission and residents that are watching to attend and find out what's going on in the Riverwalk project.
Five until?
Seven.
Five to seven.
All right, and that's it.
Mr. Chair, can I just add one thing to Mr. Harlecker's comment about the Riverdale Station apartments? So, there's actually a groundbreaking ceremony too. Even though they started construction, they're working on footings, but there is a groundbreaking ceremony next Thursday, on the twenty fifth, from two to three o'clock, so you're welcome to attend, if you can fit in in your schedule. I know that's a really high profile and important project for the city, so if you're available and you're around, you're welcome to join us.
Thank you. And as far as next month's meeting?
Next month, we've got a, another storage facility.
All right.
More of a traditional type of, type of storage facility on Vale Street and Coon Rapids Boulevard, next to the existing.
Right, not in place of the existing.
No, right next to it, same type of structures. And they're applying for the plat, the property, site plan approval, and it also requires a conditional use permit.
All right. Commissioner, anyone have anything? Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Casey, second?
Second.
Second by Heikla, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion revoked, meeting adjourned.